All right, thank you. I'd like to call the board of education, the Board of Education for orders. Marty can take the questions.
Um, Dell?
I am here.
Tony?
No.
Alan?
Yes.
Randy?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Blair?
Yes.
I'm here. Is Michelle here?
No.
No, Michelle's not here.
Okay. Emily?
Here.
Jim?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yep. And what?
Here.
Okay, we're only missing one person.
All right, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Several items of minutes and field trips. Who wants to be heard on the agenda?
When are we getting, I believe? Do we have any more minutes pending? Other than the ones we had in our package?
I don't know. I don't believe so, no. No. There's a regular meeting on the 25th and a special meeting on the 28th. All right, nothing on the consent agenda. It's approved, all right? The board of the chair. I just want to say that we did have the evaluation of our superintendent on October 28th, and most of the board members were present. At the, I think the evaluation went very well. At the evaluation, the board members who were present were presented with letters, certain letters from parents, I shouldn't say that, from members of the community. Parents, I think primarily mostly. It was the first time that most of the board members had seen the letters was at the evaluation that night. I think it's disappointing, at least to me, that they were addressed to the board, which they were, they should have been presented. It was hard to read and digest them all that night in the midst of the evaluation. But I want to just take the moment, a moment to, for myself, correct what I believe is somewhat of a misperception, which is that it should be clear that whatever the superintendent is doing is with the support of at least the majority of the board, and most of the board, on most things, and if not all the board. That the superintendent is not acting willy-nilly. She's not, she is leading us. That's why the Board of Education hired her. We were looking for a leader. She's suggesting things to the board, but the board is supporting her. The board has, several of the issues that she's brought before the board have been approved by the board, and that's why the superintendent is proceeding the way she is. So I want to make it clear that the superintendent has the full support of the Board of Education. I understand that there have been some significant changes that the superintendent has proposed and that the board has approved. Speaking for myself, the board is most interested in improving student achievement. That's what this comes down to. It has nothing to do with personalities. That's the number-one goal that the superintendent, I believe, is keeping her eyes on, and that's what we are trying to do. I understand it involves changes to things that have been around for some period of time, in some cases, and again, the superintendent has the support of the board and has done the things that she has done with the board's consent and with the board's approval. And so I'm looking forward, and I believe the board's looking forward to her guiding us, continuing going forward. So I just wanted to say that, so that it was clear, and I appreciate the fact, the folks who did communicate with the board at the time of the superintendent's evaluation. That's all I have. Dr. Castellano?
Well, thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. I just want to say that it's Board Appreciation Month, so those are the little goodies in front of you. Thank you for all you do, and at the next meeting, we will have a little musical presentation from students. So we're very excited about that in honor of your hard work. So thank you very much. Our next item is a concern about electronic games that I asked Ms. Kalila and Mrs. Judd to come and just speak about quickly. Yes? Let me, I'll give you a little background as they set up. We talked about in policy last, two weeks ago, there's a miscommunication that bring your own device equals electronics games, and they're really two different issues. So I'm asking best Emily and Kathy to just talk about that and to leave the concerns of the board or the public.
So good evening, everyone. So our focus tonight is going to be on giving you the highlights of bring your own device at the elementary school level. So we've prepared a few slides for you that will hopefully give you important key information that we're stressing in our schools and to answer some questions that we may have. So we'll begin.
So I want to start with the purpose, just to refresh everyone's memory. Under the direction of the classroom teacher and with permission from parents, personal devices and technology can come to school. And they can be used or should be used as a learning tool to support the academic goals and use to access district technology resources such as the Internet to support our learning goals. So that's really our main focus, and we want to make sure that everybody's clear about that focus. The kinds of devices that we have seen in school our children are bringing are things like Kindles, Nooks, iPods, iPads. We have some laptops and some tablets. And there's a wide range of them throughout the building. We mostly see them at the upper levels, mostly in grades three, four, and five. A little bit of the Kindle in second grade during.
And those devices, we are noticing are being used for various specific things right now. And so many students are using their devices as readers. They're practicing different types of skills, both in language art and math, lots of vocabulary building. Some students, especially in the upper grades, are doing projects together and doing some bookkeeping. They're using them to record group discussions. If they're having a book club talk, they're recording those discussions so they can be further assessed with the classroom teachers. They're taking notes with them, and they're doing some research. They're recording answers to questions or tasks that they're being given, and they're completing some homework assignments. And some kids are using them as dictionaries or resources. So it's a variety of uses that are happening with these devices.
And interestingly enough, just recently, for instance, fourth grade, a fourth grade teacher told me today that some of the kids, it's not a whole lot, but we're starting, are actually emailing their homework to the teacher that night after they completed. And it's kind of exciting. It's exciting that kids are able to do that.
And so at the elementary level, we began this process in January. So in January, we sent home with students, for parents, to review the bring your own device along with our technology policies and acceptable use agreements. That happened in January. In February, both Kathy and I sent home follow-up communications to offer some clarification for questions that we, you know, acquired throughout that time. The teachers also reviewed the bring your own device to make sure they were clearly aware of their role, the role of the device, and the role that the student played in working with their particular device within the classroom setting. And then students will receive a presentation during their computer lab time with the policy broken down into kid-friendly language, so they understand their responsibilities. And that's going to be happening this week and next week with our students.
Right. And that's across the board. We're going to do that from kindergarten through grade five. So some considerations. We understand that devices that are for learning may also have some entertainment applications. Applications for entertainment are not permitted at all during learning time. And use of these applications during indoor recess and on the bus is permitted, and a no-share guideline is in force. I think for me, in both my schools, because I've allowed my students to have iPods, especially for long bus rides and for field trips, I'm not having a lot of issues. They know clearly that they can't share their devices, and that's been happening for the last few years, so it's not really new for my students. What I noticed several years ago is that when I allowed that to happen, bus incidences, behaviors, negative behaviors decreased, and students were much more compliant. So they're pretty clear on it, and I think as time goes on, all three schools will certainly have that same understanding. My students just clearly know you can't share. It's the little ones who started to bring some devices in, and as soon as I told them that they couldn't share, that has decreased tremendously.
So indoor recess, we're typically seeing students take part in these kinds of activities. They're enjoying games. They're using lots of different building materials. They're making access to puzzles, drawing, coloring, lots of creative play. We have like little tiny animals, cars, and they're being very creative with those pieces. Some of them are choosing to read. Some of them may choose to use computers to access some of our programs and software. Sometimes, on occasion, we might have one classroom that would just be designated as a movie, so if they want to choose to go in and watch that for 15 minutes, they may do so. I do have a group of kids, and I'm sure that you do too, that will take advantage of the gym, so a supervising teacher or staff member will take maybe 15 kids to the gym and do an activity there. And we do have an option to use their personal device, again, with the no-share rule around that. And, you know, I'm finding that I'm having very few, if any, who are choosing that as one of their choices. But for the most part, they're taking advantage of being with their peers and interacting with their peers.
And I think recess, indoor recess especially, is different in each building depending on the makeup. In one of my buildings, we rotate each day where the children will be, whether they're in the gym, the computer lab, the library, the classroom, or they might see a movie. For the personal device use, we have some guidelines built around that. And again, that has decreased too, because they mostly use the computer in the classroom. But if they choose to use maybe their Kindle because they want to read or continue reading or another personal device, they're required to stay in their seat, so that they're not huddled all together on the floor, and then it helps to burn out some of that sharing.
So, you know, we believe in some of these key points here, that all students will be provided with the necessary technology tools to enhance learning. So we're not asking any student to bring in a device in order to take part of a learning opportunity. That we believe that increased professional development will, you know, create meaningful ways to integrate technology, and so that our teachers are currently receiving, they're going out for training, they're learning from each other, and I think over time, that's really going to increase. And I think we're going to see some projects that are going to be really including the devices in a way that I think are at a high level. And we also believe that we are obligated to have ongoing instruction in the use of technology, and we think that will promote the responsible citizenship that we want for all of our students who use technology.
You know, one of the things that I talked to with Emily about is the fact that we have to begin teaching our students at the very elementary level, from kindergarten on up. Because we look today at students that are in the middle school, high school, and college who don't have a clue as to how to be respectful using these devices. And if we can instill in children how to use it and use it properly and not make those mistakes, then by the time they get to middle school, high school, and college and beyond, even adults can make mistakes not realizing. Then they're going to be better users of technology as well as enhancing their own learning. They'll have a better, it'll be better for them in the long run. Lastly, we want to just note that we invite anyone to contact your child's teacher or administration, should you have any further questions or concerns. And again, we're not asking that every child have to bring in a device. It's for those students that have the device and would like to start using it in their instruction in an appropriate way. And we can't stress enough, it's clearly up to the classroom teacher. If the classroom teacher does not want the children to use the device at their desk at a certain moment, then they're all put away. And we have found, I know, we have found putting them in the backpack prevents them willing to want to take them out at a time that we don't want them to use that. So that's all we got.
How, how does a teacher handle all these various platforms in a classroom between an iPad, an iPhone, a Mini, a Kindle, a Nook, to make sure that those children, even in a small classroom, are all using the same program, the same research, what we hope is happening to enhance education and not detract?
I know in our building, and my fourth and fifth grade teachers are really involved in it, there are certain applications that they let them use at the present time. In terms of reading, lots of children have lots of books, so not everybody's reading the same book. So if they're reading an independent book, and classroom teachers can check the level of the book, then they can use their Nook or their iPad during that time. If they're doing vocabulary building, the teacher has said, go to your thesaurus or your dictionary and use those for looking up words. So there's specific applications that right now that they're advocating and suggesting that they use. And it's easy to look to make sure that that's what they're using. They use stack the states, for instance, when they practice the states. They'll use math practices if they're building math fluency skills. So there are specific things that my teachers have recommended that parents, if they wish to, can download on their children's iPad or laptop. And so my teachers seem to think and feel very comfortable with monitoring what's going on. They actually can monitor what games the kids are on too, and have told me which ones that they're generally using.
Well, I'm concerned, I mean, there's all, you know, all positive motion to make sure kids are using devices appropriately. And I do believe, as you say, the fourth, fifth, and of course, the older grades in this building can certainly be carefully taught. It's the younger kids. And I am concerned that you didn't, you didn't address outdoor recess. A lot of kids will just sit and play their games instead of really enjoying outdoor recess, the few minutes they get, especially in bad weather. I mean, I'm concerned that, you know, these kids are becoming 24-hour-a-day, or at least 18-hour-a-day consumers of technology instead of being kids.
Well, we encourage them not to take them outside, and when we did a poll this year to see how many are taking them out, I only have one student in, in one of my schools that takes his out. He prefers not to be running around, although we encourage him. It's sort of like the child who'd like to take a board game out and sit at our picnic tables or sit out in the garden and read. So this particular child, right at the moment, and again, it's only one between both my schools, that takes his, his technology outside.
And I have none. You can say that clearly, that absolutely one person in all three elementary schools will sit somewhere and play with a video game.
And it's not every day. I mean, this child just started doing that recently. I could have a child that's ill, and in the past, if the child can't run around, we let them either take a game out, a book out, their Kindle out, something outside. So there may be an opportunity for another child to do the same thing. But generally speaking, most of our kids play actively outside.
Kids have only started using this, though. The policy was enacted when?
But because, because my schools were allowed to use iPads and that kind of thing on the school bus for the ride home, because some of my, my lag time between my bus pickup is very long, and also some of the rides are long. So children were able to use, use them on the bus in the past. So my kids are pretty used to it. And occasionally, a child would take one out if, again, was unable to play in an, in an activity, an active activity.
And, you know, I did have last, I think you as well, because we had the Kindles, but we had students in fourth and fifth grade last year who did use them as readers already. They were already in the classrooms.
Apparently recent, within the last several months.
Yeah.
I just want to try to clarify the line between what we're talking about as far as BYOD policy, which is very recent, which really applies towards an introduction and a quantification and qualification of the use of devices in a learning environment, which is related to bringing your own device that you're bringing to play with, which has been going on as principals see fit in the past. So it's not quite the same thing. The policy is new, but it really has to do with, with the ability to have a universal device usage where possible for, for learning. And I think some of the concerns that have come up are actually more have to do with what we're talking about as far as indoor recess than the actual BYOD policy. And as a, as a member of the policy committee, I can assure you that we labored over a lot of the details that apply to the use of technology for learning, but also realized that the principals had to deal with the fact that those technological tools are multi, multi-use tools that also have games on them. And I think what we're hearing from the parents is a concern more about the fact that now having their hands, or probably already did for quite a while, having their hands with devices that they can, they can play with. Now, my concern is, as a parent, is that I have, I have two children, one of who has that, whom has that tendency to, his brain just fires off on these devices and games. And I know that there are certain dopamine receptors that we have that if we can, and if we're of that type of person, we will do that instead of anything else. In fact, the rest of life can sometimes be stuff that fills up time in between the time we get on this little screen. There are other kids, like my other child, who will do that a little bit because it's a cool thing to do, but then he'll go off and do something else. And obviously, those are kids we're kind of talking about, but the ones that we really need to be concerned about, and we are a small enough school system, that I think maybe the parents want to know that, that because we're small enough, you can have enough of an individual one-on-one concern for kids who may be trending towards that sometimes dangerous evolution to the fact that suddenly that little device, which is now not only unofficially but officially legitimized, can take over their entire interests during their free time, sometimes at home and then maybe in indoor recess. So you've said there's only this one guy. Outdoor, outdoor, but even indoors, even indoors, you showed the whole list of things that can happen in indoor recess. But what I'm concerned with, and as Kim would tell me, I'm working with a very long, small dataset here, but I think it's representative perhaps, what I'm concerned with is that we have to make sure that allowing, even allowing that for indoor recess as an option, that it doesn't become for certain kids, certain individuals, the only option. And that you're going to have that, because we're not in any way regulating that or writing policy for that, but as principals, you're always keen to work with the kid and work with the parent, to make sure that you don't see something blossom there that you don't want to have blossom, and then...
Can I just, I just want to, there are two things. The difference from the past to now is that they have access, they could have access to the internet, whereas before, we weren't downloading anything or having access to the Internet. Second thing is, once we really stressed the no-sharing, the kids don't want to play with their devices during recess because they're doing it independently. They'd rather, if they're going to use Internet, they'll go on, I mean, use computers, they'll go on to the school computer in the classroom so that they can play with a group of kids. So they're tending to, to do other things than use their device because they know they can't share.
That was my second question. By sharing, does that also restrict over-the-shoulder looking? Is that considered sharing?
We're trying to do that, but not...
Because that's a really tricky area, too.
It is really.
Because you could have a kindergarten looking over the shoulder of a fourth grader...
Well, they're not in the same room.
Well, you know, you could have a younger student looking over the shoulder of a, and seeing something that, you know, not necessarily inappropriate, but might lure them into a world that they might want to avoid for a few more years. So if it is over the shoulder, that's discouraged, too.
That's why we ask them to sit in their own seats in their classroom, so that they're not near a group of kids.
I have a couple of questions in the group. The first one is, you mentioned that there are games in the classroom that are available to be played, sometimes taken, sometimes board games, sometimes taken outside if the children are not in physical condition to participate. Can you please give me some indication of what type of board games we're talking about?
Connect Four, Scrabble, Monopoly.
So you could either play Scrabble or Connect Four with a board game, or you could play something like Scrabble or Connect Four, God forbid, Angry Birds on your device. Do you see a fundamental difference, other than the fact that one is on a screen and one is tactile and in front of you, between those two activities?
Well, one is, in my mind, is more interactive. I mean, when they're playing N'Kala, they're playing Scrabble with, you know, a group of peers, it is much more, they're giving, taking, and they're kind of discussing what they're doing. So I do see the big differences there. And they, they tend to choose that more so.
Right. So what you say is that they actually are acting on the social impulse, which is that they would prefer to be playing games with other people than playing solitaire, in essence.
Right. Because they can't share.
All right, because they can't share.
Correct.
So do you view that the occasional, apparently occasional playing of games solo by children at various times to be something that is infringing or interfering with the educational mission of the school?
No, I don't.
If it's at their choice time?
Yeah, not during instructional time, but during recess.
No, I'm talking about at the time they're permitted to use it.
Yeah, no, I don't. I mean, and again, right now, I mean, I have this one student right now who in the last week or so decided that he'd like to do that. Next week, he may choose to just play with the other kids. So, and that's the nature of elementary school children. I mean, they change their mind rather quickly. Teachers say, look, I'm not going to be responsible for it. I discourage you from taking it outside. And kids just, you know, they leave it in the building. They leave it in their backpacks. So, and they're, and I'm finding there, and I'm sure you do too, I'm finding that they're really compliant, they're really listening to when they can take it out, when they can't take it out, what it could be used for. And it's not as if we're, I mean, we're creeping in on it. We're using it for specific things, like reading and mathematics.
Okay. And are you finding that the use of the devices that are brought to school by students for the educational portion of the program, forgetting, putting aside this recess issue, are they helpful? Are they supporting the educational mission in any important way?
Well, I think they are.
I think so, too. I will say, though, that I feel as though our students are not using the Internet at this point, but that will be an option for them. So we're really, as I said, just really using them as readers, or perhaps some applications like the thesaurus or that type of piece, or writing maybe in the note section, you know, information. But I do think with more access to the Internet, that different projects and activities, that teachers will be prepared to invite those devices as a means for, you know, advancing the learning. So I think that we're, I feel we're at the early stages at this point, and I feel like that teachers do need a lot of training and professional development to use these devices in a way that's going to be, you know, encouraging the learning objectives for any content area.
So you see an upside potential to these devices, once we bring everyone along, including the faculty and the best users?
Right.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And right now, I have three classes that are just, just are on the Internet and are just beginning to use it.
But, you know, we also have other technology, not just sort of that concept of, you know, the device coming for the person. We've always used, for example, cameras, flip phones, flip cameras and regular cameras. We've always done sort of presentations using technology where they integrate a visual information to help, you know, communicate their learning. So they've used other types of technology that we've provided for them. And so we, you know, they are integrating different things, they're just not using their own personal devices. And so that's...
Can I ask one other question? The students that are sending their homework in, your fourth, fifth graders, whatever, are they getting a response back from the teacher electronically?
The teacher's really excited about it, yes. But she's really good about responding right away.
And is this able, is this enabling the teacher to be able to be more efficient and to do more faster by having it electronically as opposed to waiting to get it the next day, in terms of getting a response back faster to the child?
Right.
Well, right, because I would really highlight that, because I think for a teacher, it would help them provide feedback in a quicker way.
Plus, if a child's doing something incorrectly, it comes that night, and it's early enough, you can let the child know to go back and to make some edits or to look at another strategy. So that's really good.
So this is almost a real-time communication between the teachers.
And we're just at the beginning stages of it, though, too. But it's exciting. I mean, it's nice to see the teacher really excited about it, and the kids really excited about it. about it. And others might begin to see it too, other students might begin to see it too.
Well, let that be a lesson to people who think the teachers go home after this, after this, until it's time to get up and it's morning.
Yeah.
All right.
I just, you said the kids aren't using the internet.
Well, they are. They are, in the past, they have not been able to access the internet. This is the first year since the new policy that children would be able to access the internet with their personal device. They've always been able to access the internet.
Now, so, I mean, obviously each, each school is Wi-Fi, like it is up here.
Yes.
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 Is it the same kind of network?
I'm not sure I know what your question is.
Do you know the answer to that?
No, it is not.
Right.
How is it different from what's here right now?
What we have here is more centralized, we can manage it centrally. Down at the elementary schools, it's individual access points deployed around the building.
You mean hotspots?
Yes.
So, it's the same thing, it's just whether it's, you know, in a cloud here, or it's hotspots in the elementary school, having to do lightly with...
It's all going to the same internet.
Okay. And so the access, how does someone log on in their device?
Well, I don't know if you want to...
Well, in the K-5 buildings, there is no authentication for users. It's you get the password from your teacher or administrator, so it's one password for everybody. Up here, we have it set now where students can access the Wi-Fi by signing into the network, and, you know, school-owned devices have a pre-shared password that we put into the devices.
But the children don't put in the password. Our tech technician puts in the password in each individual device.
Every day?
No. No, once it's in, it's in.
That's good to know. And my question is, what is our filtering system then, for the K-5, in terms of content?
It's the same state supply filter, it's from a company called 86. It's the same thing that's throughout the region.
So the same thing that we would have here?
Yes.
So if we had a first grader, say at Reach, we had a pre-K or a kindergarten child, or someone visiting, they brought their device either here, the elementary school, or here, it's really one and the same once they're logged on?
Correct.
It's the filter that's a problem. If you have your own personal, if you have your computer here, we have ability to monitor and to exclude content, don't we?
Mm-hmm.
In a, bring your own device, we can't, correct?
No, if they log into ours, we can monitor what they are doing. We're showing kids that.
Okay. Just FYI, if that's all true and correct, and if I'm not, you know, an ignoramus, which is a possibility, I'm watching Sex and the City episodes, and I could've downloaded The Kama Sutra. So it's about content filtering for the younger kids. It's hard enough up here, but it's the fact that you're having kids in different classrooms who could accidentally log on to content that they're not old enough nor sophisticated enough to be able to realize that's not a good thing. That's the issue. It's about, about the age level...
Right.
And the sophistication, and the monitoring, which we're asking our teachers to do a lot of.
Well, in our computer labs, Valerie, we have a filtering system, and our students are not permitted to, you know, but we don't, we're blocked out of like just about everything.
Absolutely. When you're, when you're using one of our many computers...
Right.
Or the Cromes we're gonna distribute, or the laptops that we have, and we'll have access always for our kids.
Okay, so are you thinking of...
In-house filter, but if you're bringing your own device, nothing is filtered. That's my problem, that's my concern.
There are different levels of filtering, there are different catchalls. It's the bring your own devices here, go through, if the kid signs in with their own device, they get hit with the restrictive filtering that they would get sitting at a computer here.
No, because I just did that right here.
They are signing in, if you were signing into a network account that we had set up for you, you would be filtered at a more restrictive level.
I just, I just signed up here.
Valerie, Valerie, what'd you sign up for?
Yours is different.
You were signed in by Karen at some point.
Can I clarify one thing?
You were signed in by Karen at some point.
The password that I put on yours is not a student password. I gave you the access that the adults in the building have.
How is that different? That was part of my question.
There is different, at the, at the high school, we have the ability to segregate different groups, and say, if you are a student, you get this level of filtering. If you are an adult, you get this level, level of filtering. That's what we did when we upgraded the wireless. We put in the management. That management doesn't exist at the elementary schools. So they get one level of filtering for everyone. That's why the BYOD is complicated, because to restrict it, we have to restrict it to the team as well, which we have now done, which as of two weeks ago, we restricted it for everyone.
And that's kind of why our school wasn't using it yet, until we were able to figure that part out.
I'm sorry, what?
Kelly?
Uh, Valerie, but an iPhone or an iPad has, could have 3G on, right?
Right, and they're not allowed to use 3G.
And that's in the policy.
Correct. And that's an important piece to be in the policy. And that's one of the things that'll, they'll be instructed on. Those that are already in, already know that, but they're also gonna get a second. Those are the instructions.
All right. Is there anything else on this electronic games concern?
Alan? I just wanna say to Valerie's point, be clear, there are two different networks. Nobody can log into those, at least an adult can't, without having...
You're talking about here?
Here. Well, it's three different networks, but we're just talking, let's just talk about the two that we're talking about, we'll talk about the... Nobody can, even we can't. Karen has, has taken each of our devices in her hand and secretly logged us in, secretly and permanently, to the Shapog Wi-Fi network, that's what it's called. If you're familiar with wireless networks at home, you have a name, name to them. There's another network called the Shapog BYOD, which I don't know whether it's done by a particular login, or whether it's, it is, so each child is assigned to it.
It's done by a student login, so when they log in with their network credentials, it will give them a, exactly what they're gonna get if they sit down at the computer.
Okay. So they can't access the adult Shapog Wi-Fi, because they don't have the password for that. And we can't access the BYOD, although I'm sure that Valerie's gonna want to very soon, so she can test it. So you'll have to give her an ID for that?
After I finish watching the episode of Sex and the City.
Well, do that on your own, we're busy. So that's, that, just to clarify, that's the difference. These students can't just wander into the one that we're in. We can't even wander into it. We've been, we've been set up by this personally and individually.
Exactly. I also wanna clarify that up here, everything is managed. So when a student logs on, even to Shapog BYOD, we can see them. We can see their devices, we know what they're using, so what that's helpful for is in the instance that we do have a disciplinary issue, we can turn off that, that child's access to any computer, regardless of whether they're using their own device or not. But that is different than what's at the elementary schools, and that's the distinction.
Right, okay.
And lastly, I just want to remind you that the elementary students don't take out their device unless they're instructed by the classroom teacher that it's okay to use.
And there's a purpose for the device.
So they're not walking around with it all the time.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, in your packet, there is a flyer from CADE. They are doing a Common Core State Standards, what Board of Education members need to know. It is on April 2nd. If you would like to go, if you email Debbie by like Wednesday or Thursday, we'll be happy to register you. And that's at the AquaTurf.
All right, thank you. Moving on to committee reports, Brown Communications.
Communications, we met, as I told you, I think we haven't met since, but we are working on the newsletter. Requests have been sent out to all staff and administration, who will be supplying us with articles. Deadline is Friday, March 29th, or 8th. And we are at work on our, our annual newsletter.
Okay, thank you. Education Committee, Marty, anything?
No, I don't have any reports yet.
All right. Just to remind us that our next education meeting is March 25th. Facilities, Tony, anything?
Ed connection, no need.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ed connection, yes.
No need.
All right, anything? Nothing?
No need.
Oh, I'm sorry. Facilities, Tony.
My glee here is to put the minutes of the facilities committee meeting in the package that you got. And if everyone's happy with that, can we make that as a concern agenda, part of the concern agenda?
That's fine.
Saves some time there. And if anyone has questions, we can try to answer them at this time.
Anything else?
No.
Finance, Valerie?
We met prior to the budget presentation. We have a series of meetings with the administration that were very cooperative as the budget was being prepared. I want to thank Bob and Pat for all of that information. We've got reams and reams of specific budget requests per cost center. We reviewed our financial report for five, I'm sorry, 22849, there's no issues. I do want to point out that we did review capital facilities, approximately $387,000 was originally submitted as a budget request for this next budget year, 2013, 14. Bob and Pat went through and determined that some of those budget requests do not have to come out of the operating budget, that indeed could be financed if this board approves a future meeting, out of the 1% capital fund and the elementary capital repair fund. About $160,000 could come out of 1% capital fund, and still leave us a balance of approximately $100,000, depending on the movement of a few other issues. And the $43,000 of the operating budget would be relieved as these items are, come out of the elementary capital repair fund, and the balance of that right now would be $387,000 balanced after we take these deductions. Correct, Bob? $387,000? So, that's one way to lessen the burden on the operating budget, and also a good way to use funds that we already have established, and once again, we bring that toward the next business meeting or before.
Well, we're in a business meeting right now. Is this something that needs to be attended to?
It's not on the agenda, and Bob thinks we should, the board, our, our finance committee recommended we do this, but board action will be...
Very good, thank you. Any other one?
That's it.
Any questions for Valerie? All right, thank you. Grades, Larry, anything?
Very short. Two and a half years ago, we started with this committee and recognized that there is a difference between grade policy and grade philosophy, and I've asked the superintendent to look into that at her earliest inconvenience, and she would like to comment perhaps a few words about that.
Yeah, we definitely had this on our radar. Grades are a big piece of the puzzle when you think about curriculum, instruction, student work, expectations. We are, at the high school, going to be using rubrics for the NEAS visits, school-wide rubrics, so using of rubrics are gonna be coming into, and we do that already. With Power School, we're going to have to reestablish how we are doing our grades and how we're reporting our grades. So, this is definitely on our agenda, it'll definitely be part of the work that we do next year, when we look at curriculum, instruction, what our expectations are, and I just didn't want people to think that we had put it over to the side, it was just we had to get a strong foundation in place of what was going on, now that we're moving from 84-minute classes to 57-minute classes, getting the curriculum together, and now the next step is really looking at the student work and what's expected. So, definitely we'll have more movement in that area soon.
All right, thank you. Next item, Region 12 Vision, Mission Strategic Plans.
Well, I guess that's me again. We have our next meeting next Tuesday. We are in the process of updating the website with all of the resources that we've been handing out to the committees. Next week, Don O'Leary, with Tony's help, will do a presentation on what we've heard so far from Castle Blues and CHK. I know we're not going to present in April to the Board of Education, assuming it's probably gonna be closer to May, but we are going to be presenting our options probably in April to the committee. So please, as soon as I get to those dates, try to see if you can come, because I think it's important that you hear, each committee will do a presentation, and they will give you a summary of the different areas that we're studying, facilities, costs, transportation, safety and security, and then they'll give you a 10-year span of costs, and then they're going to recommend one or two of the options to the Board of Education.
Do you have a date for that, Pat?
Not yet. I'll let you know as soon as possible.
Okay. Any clues on that?
Nope.
Negotiations, Greg, anything?
Policy. Michelle's out here, Alan?
Yeah, she's, she and I prepared a, we'll mention something. We, we actually had approved, and we're going to bring a new graduation requirements policy.
It's coming next, so, we forgot to put on the agenda, we're doing it for the next week.
But you're, you can live with it until...
Yes.
Okay. Because we, we thought there was a...
It was, but we forgot, so...
Okay. The other thing is, we're getting a corrected acceptable computer use form for staff. We've been working on it, we had kind of a mishmash version, and we're getting that cleaned up, and we'll be giving it in our next meeting. Also, and this is a little confusing to me, we, we were asked by Don to review the building use policy as part of the discussion that we're gonna be having about no alcohol, or alcohol or not. I think we're talking about it tonight, which means it may be moved. We may be rewriting policy to make it clearer, perhaps, or it could just be that, you know, the, the policy committee, like all committees, is just a subset of the board, so we can obviously be unnecessary, the whole board's gonna take an issue. So I thought this was a policy issue first, but if we're under, once again, running up into kind of time constraints with the gun library, then maybe that's why we're dealing with it now, and we will no longer make the effort to review policy on alcohol use ourselves.
I, I would, I don't, speaking for myself, I don't know that that's necessary, I mean, in other words, I think that it's something that the committee should look at. The items on the agenda tonight, I believe, because of the constraints that the gun library has itself, they need planning time.
Right. So it's more of a one-off then for us now, than what we're talking about?
Yes. So I think it should be driven by that. I think it's a, it's a policy that should be looked at, updated if necessary.
Well, I'll make sure I have a copy of it for our discussion in the next five minutes.
I did the second.
No, no, I mean, we'll, I'll bring it up on the phone, and we can talk about the exact policy.
I will let the board know that we are going to be enforcing the policy of the pool having a lifeguard in attendance if anyone uses the pool, so you may be hearing from some community people who are not gonna be happy about that, but...
It's a good policy.
Yeah, it is a good policy, it needs to be enforced, so...
In light of all the tragedies that have happened recently in high schools.
Yeah, and, and it just, it's something we can't take any chances.
This is a lifeguard for swimming pool, what time will this person come on?
Well, no, it basically, when we're, when we are using it as a school, we have a certified person here. If you are a renter of the pool, you have to prove that you have a lifeguard with you, or you cannot use the pool.
Okay, that has something to do with the, with the public swimming time.
Yes, it does.
It does, so...
Yeah. The park and rec is going to have to, we've talked to park and rec.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it just is, it's inappropriate, it's too dangerous to have people swimming and not have a lifeguard, and it's in the policy.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Policy, all right, regional school repair, Tony, anything?
You know, it was in the minutes, I had a paragraph in there about what we were suggesting and streamlining a, the lease items that we need to fix and so forth, and I, this morning spoke with, I sent a different letter to the three selectmen outlining what we were thinking about and asking them for their, what they thought, and this morning I called each and every one of them, and they all said that was fine with them, and so now it's a matter of whether it's fine with the board.
All right, so you'll present that to us?
Mm-hmm.
Will you present it in more detail? Will you present it in more detail? I mean, how do you expect, how is the board to make a decision about that?
Do you want me to do that now?
Are you looking for approval now?
The lease changes.
That'd be nice, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the minutes.
Now, these are repairs, so under the lease.
Yeah, what we, what we did--
Go ahead.
Well, actually, we did it once. What we did in the past was that, once a year, we would get together with either the selectmen of each town or their representatives, and we would walk, Don and I, and they would, and whoever else they wanted to bring, would walk through the schools and make a list of things that we thought were needed repairs.
These are the three primary school buildings.
Pardon me?
These are the three primary school--
Primary school buildings, yes. And so, we did that, and then it took some time to get our numbers associated with each item and then put priorities on them. And that amounted to probably about four or five meetings that we had in order to get to the bottom line and set priorities and so forth. But what happens is that that's a snapshot in time, and that, as the year went on, the priorities changed and so forth. And we had the repair project, some things got folded into that and so forth. And so, we were left with a list that certainly, compared to the other things that were happening at the school, that didn't float to the top as the most important thing anymore to do. And so, that left, I think, a little bit of a problem with accounting, and Bob has to carry that throughout the year, and it turns out that we may not do it and so forth. So, what we want to do to streamline it is that maybe we'll run that list three or four times a year and then allow the selectmen to have the same veto power that they had before, and that they look over the list and either approve it or not. And then we bring it before the board for that approval and on that hundred thousand dollar money that we use.
All right. But you're not making that presentation of that list tonight?
Well, we, if we get approval, we'll cancel the old list, which will put some money back into the three hundred and eighty-some odd thousand that we have.
I'm sorry, Tony, if you get approval for what? What are you looking, do you have a motion that you want to make?
If we get approval from the board to do what I just outlined.
To amend?
To change your process?
Yes.
Is the earlier process, as if you recall, I don't recall, maybe Greg does, is that required by the lease, or is the--
Yes.
It's in the lease.
I understand that. But the exact process you used before, or is the process that you're suggesting also allowed by the lease?
What do you say, Greg?
I don't think so.
I'd have, I'd literally have to write down both, I'd have to have both processes in front of me to analyze it. The process of the lease involves a joint enterprise between the towns and the board to appoint people to a committee to come up with a list of suggested repairs.
Right.
That's the same thing that's going to happen here, only instead of having the committee meet and come up with the list, it's going to be, the facilities people are going to come up with, basically, Tony's new plan is that we're going to come up with the list. We're going to submit it to the towns, and rather than them taking an active role in coming up with the list, we're doing essentially the same thing. The only difference is, is we're starting the process. We're giving the initial impetus to it, and that way, they're free to make suggestions. It's a more efficient process, but I don't think it's fundamentally different from the process that's in the lease. And I will review the lease to make sure.
I guess my question is, is this something that requires board approval? Or as a committee, can you just say this is the way we're going to operate?
We're going to have to modify the lease?
Well, I'm not sure.
Because there's timing involved, wasn't there? There's specific timeframes?
Can we put it off to the next meeting, give me a chance to review the lease?
Yes, if it contemplates a modification of the lease, that obviously takes two--
It's a very definite lease.
One of the--
I know this is the lease, but the question is, what he's proposing, is that in violation of the lease?
I agree, I think so, but we'll, we'll see.
I don't know. Greg?
One of the problems that we had was that we tried to get that, that system going again, and we got no response. I mean, everyone was essentially happy with what they had and said, "We don't have the time." And they said, "No, we got no response at all."
The first, the selectmen, you mean, the towns, yeah. Well, I guess it should be looked at, and so we know exactly what we have and whether what's being proposed is a modification of the lease, in which case it would require both parties to consent. Valerie?
Unless, because we spent two point five million on the elementary school repair, things were a little bit more muddled because we had so much repair going forward. And then, from now on, we could be a little bit more precise and follow the lease terms. But certainly, it's going to be three towns in the region, and this could be draft twenty-nine.
You know, but I'm not certain. So, all I'm saying, and I suggest, is that we just look at the lease, and then we can decide how to proceed.
We had twenty-eight before.
Could I just suggest, Greg, while you're looking at this, what you said, just this ancient history nobody may care about, but I'll say it quickly anyway. The first selectmen asked for this because they were so concerned that for so many years, maintenance didn't happen because there was no proper procedure for it to happen. And they were all bent out of shape that it didn't happen, and they insisted that this was stipulated in the lease. Obviously, things have changed, and we have, not only had a huge building project, and we can also thank Tony for it, but we're actively maintaining things. I would suggest, however, so that this doesn't come back and bite us in the hind end in the future, that we simply change the lease and have everybody re-sign the draft, whatever, and all it has to do is say, a sentence that says, "This process can be waived annually by a letter from the selectmen."
All right, okay.
All right, yeah, let's just not get into the weeds, but I'll look at--
Just want to make sure we don't overlook--
That's a good idea. I'll settle the weeds.
Yeah.
Because no one fights in trainees.
Is this more about getting the money that's been allocated for those jobs lists?
No.
Then it's just the whole process itself? Okay.
It's just the front end of the process, yeah.
Okay.
I think we look at the lease, determine if the lease really needs changing to do what you're proposing. I don't know.
We are victims of our own diligence.
Anything else on that, Tony?
What's that?
Technology, now?
Can I get it?
Nothing for technology.
Transportation, anything?
Clear.
All right. Long-range plan, Dr. Casatino?
Did I just say that?
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, you did.
You've blurred over.
I mixed two together.
You have anything else?
No.
All right. New business. Seven to one, consider request of Gun Memorial Library to use Washington Primary School for the Washington, Connecticut Antique Show, waiving policy prohibiting alcoholic beverages.
Can we do that last year?
Hold on, hold on.
Can we hear a little bit about how, if there aren't someone here from the library that's with us to share a little bit how it went last year, what the benefits are moving forward?
I know that, I've asked Jean Chaitman, who's the executive director of the Gun Library, here, is she here?
Come over there, yes. Yes, we could be camera.
Good evening, Mrs. Chaitman.
First of all, I thank you so much for waiving the policy last year and allowing us to hold the antique show. It was a very stressful time trying to pull that together in a month's time, not having any idea on what, how we were going to be able to do it, whether it was going to fit, whether we're going to be able to transform the gymnasium into a suitable place that was going to satisfy all the donors that were there. But we got nothing but accolades. Working with the staff and personnel was just so pleasant. Everyone at the school was very accommodating. I have a second-grade grandson who I drop off at school many days, and even seeing the children get excited about the transformation that was going on from the large pottage trees to the lights and all. It was really very nice to see, and it ended up being very beneficial to us. We brought in almost ninety thousand dollars, which is very important to us. I was hoping that this year, if you would consider doing it again, the town hall is not going to be ready for us to do it there. Even if the town hall were ready for us to do it there, everybody liked this venue so much more that I have had people for weeks and weeks afterwards saying, "Well, please, you can't do it at the school again." It really went very nicely. And if you would allow us to waive that policy on alcohol for two nights this year, I'd also like to figure out some way of maybe being able to make this something for the students. I'd like, obviously, the elementary school students that maybe didn't get to see the actual transformation and what happened, have a time to go through and maybe see the moves in some type of a, so they could impart that. Possibly have a high school art class come down and have one of the antiques professional maybe provide them with some type of explanation, if particular. I thought maybe we could offer the art class a booth at the show because there are art exhibits as well as antiques, and maybe they could make use of that. And I don't know whether any of the classes do any fundraising, fundraising that they like to do, but if there were a class or group that would like to provide concessions or boxed lunches or something like that on Saturday and Sunday of the show, we would be more than happy to really make this a little bit more collaborative and maybe do something that might benefit the students' discretion.
Jean, just to be clear, what is the date of the show, the date?
Well, until I know that I have a place.
Right.
At the beginning of October, first weekend in October, and probably the fourth and the fifth.
And the request, as I understand it, is, as the same as last year, it would be on a weekend, and the alcohol would be served in the building on Friday night and Saturday? How does it work specifically?
Yes, it'd either be Friday night and Saturday night, or just Saturday night, depending on whether we have two parties of one. Last year, we had two parties. That went very well. It's twice as much work. I wouldn't mind it being one party.
All right. Valerie?
I'd like to make a motion that we allow the Gun Memorial Library to use the Washington Primary School for the Washington, Connecticut Antique Show, waiving the policy prohibiting alcoholic beverages for their events in October two thousand thirteen.
Second.
All right, we've moved in second. Is there any discussion, Greg?
Last year, we had a rider for that, where we said that they, that they would not be serving alcoholic beverages at any ti, or have them accessible at any time when there were students in the building during Friday. Or there were, we were hoping to get that not to start with staff. It's sort of been dismissed for today. So, is that, would that be appropriate, a friendly amendment to your motion?
Mine, I welcome your friendliness.
Okay, and I, I think it was particularly well done last year. And one thing that really excites me about this is that when, when this is supported by the region, you're supporting the library, and you're supporting something that is valued and a treasured resource in the town of Washington, and it's used by people from Roxbury and Bridgewater. I certainly know, because I've seen them there when I've been there, using the Gun Memorial Library. And I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to be on the right side of something that benefits the community in a way that's appropriate to schools. I think this is tremendous. I think the fact that you want to offer the ability to have interaction with our classes and the antiques and the whole knowledge there, I think is absolutely fabulous. This is a great idea. And I think we've covered the alcohol well.
Just, hold on, I'm sorry, just technically, as we did offer a friendly amendment, is there a second? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a second, but I also have a suggestion. I think I heard you say the friendly amendment only pertained to alcohol on Friday?
Well, only because the students are in the building on Friday and not on Saturday.
But if they're coming in to do anything other than that, they might, they may try to come in to sell something on a Saturday, as you said, if they--
It's my understanding for that weekend, there's no, the building is not yours.
The alcohol is only served on the parties at nighttime. And I wasn't suggesting that the students do any concessions or sell--
When there's any alcohol, correct.
Saturday and Sunday, so it would be the time that's on.
That makes sense. Alan?
Just as far as, what I said earlier about policy. The policy that we're waiving forbids alcohol on buildings and grounds at any time. State statute only refers to during school hours. So, all we're doing, we're not, Mary's curious, is we're not violating any state laws. We're simply using the board's ability to waive at any juncture its own policy. And we'll probably review that so that we can actually state that in the policy from now on, that it is, can be waived and make this even easier in the future.
I don't think it's something that, speaking for myself, if the board does lightly, but it's, I assume the majority of the board feels that it's appropriate in this circumstance. Is there anything further? All right, so move the second at all, is in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Move second. All right, Jean, thank you. Jean, I, you'll be in touch with the superintendent's office as--
Yes, and--
Have more things are fixed. All right. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Seven to two, discussion of year, I'm sorry, fourteen budget proposal. We could talk, start talking tonight, that's not my intention. Do you have a workshop scheduled for March twenty? Is that good enough for folks?
Yeah. Yeah, I, you know, I could, that would be great, and I'd also like to see on the agenda the fact that we can move some of the capital expenditures into the one percent and the lease expenses if we get that--
On March twentieth?
Yeah, why not?
Okay. Sure.
Why don't I?
Absolutely. We'll do that.
As always, also?
Yes, Alan.
We often are asked this, so it would be nice if we could see on the twentieth what your adjustments were to the budget proposed by the, by the administration? What you--
The reductions?
The reduction.
Yes, we have that.
Very often, people are curious, it's like, well, what are we saying?
Absolutely.
Anything else? Mike?
Dr. Casatino, just one more thing that you might consider presenting at that workshop, since we get that question frequently, would be historically, what have the budgets been over the last, maybe, three or four years here? And then if you can help put our, your budget request in the context compared to other area districts?
Yes, absolutely.
That would be helpful, too.
Yeah, I have, we had it, it's ongoing, we keep--
Anything else? Yes.
I've got a letter from Michael Temple. It's Marbledale. Did everybody get that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
And I assume that'll be subject of discussion at our workshop?
On the twentieth?
On the twentieth? Okay. So, we don't need to talk about that tonight?
No, I don't think so. We're not discussing the budget in detail. I assume we'll discuss-- I don't discuss--
I believe it is appropriate, it is not appropriate for individual board members to comment about activities having to do with the schools. It is either the superintendent or the board chair. And I, I mention that because if we get these letters, I mean, it's rude not to at least respond, as we got the-- But I don't think it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it's appropriate for us to try and second-guess what the superintendent or the schools are doing. So, just acknowledging, we got the letter, and we called it to the--
I intend to write to Mr. Temple just to say that, that the thank you has been received. It will be taken into consideration as part of the superintendent's budget presentation.
And that should be our response, if we want individually to respond also.
The letter was written to each member individually. I can't tell them what each member, what not, what to or not to do, but I intend to just acknowledge, receive that, at least--
Well, I'm concerned that it, that we are not supposed to act individually. And I think your recommendation to us could be good for us to hear what you think generally would be appropriate for board members to do in response.
Well, with regard to the letter, anytime a member of the public writes members of the board, if they write to that member of the board, I, I can't say that the member shouldn't respond. It's an item that'll be taken up, what I intended, you know, what I said was, it's an item that we will discuss as part of our budget presentation. It's a, it's an item from the budget that he's raised. I'm sure it will be discussed, but in the meantime, I will tell him it's been received. It'll be discussed.
Thank you.
And then he'll find out what the result is, I assume. Tell him.
I think the board member can make policy, but they can comment on issues.
Yes, sure. I think if a constituent or a member of the public approaches a board member about an item, certainly agree to discuss it. Like Laird was saying, right, that he, a board member, just as long as they make it clear, they don't speak for the board.
Correct.
They're speaking for the board. Okay, anything else? So, we'll have parts twenty at the time. Item seven point three, Dr. Casatino.
As part of a long-range plan, one of the concerns that has been raised and is addressed on different levels is the issue of the declining enrollment and the declining enrollment at the high school. And a letter was sent to, I think, I don't know, the board or to Valerie and me--
And then distributed.
And then distributed, and about how to really make our high school more attractive to surrounding school systems, especially Sherman, and to eighth graders, and to keep the people we have. So, we just thought that we would, Valerie asked to discuss it, so, and then maybe we brainstorm some ideas.
Well, just by way of background, can, hopefully, we can have some very public comment to reinforce this, is that for those of us that have been on the long-range planning goal three, you know, we're doing our best to keep the, you know, the configuration of the elementary schools and to look at consolidation and to do all sorts of things. But the big, big elephant in the room is that in the end, by 2020, we're going to have something like five hundred and fifty kids total in the entire district. And it's not just about the elementary school. It's obviously, what are we doing up here? Because, you know, this is, this is the heart and soul of the district. And we know we have Sherman kids that can come here. We know there's some fairly straightforward fixes, short-term, I think, in terms of a more convenient bus, late bus drop-off, that we should think, I think, very seriously about amending our contract with Sherman. It might not look with great favor by the selectmen. We're going to say, "Well, you're paying X amount per student in-house. Why are we, you know, charging other school districts far less?" But this is the big, big issue. And, and we just have to grab people as much as we can and show them that Chicago is a great place to come. One way also that's of great concern is the effect on our sports. My daughter graduated ninety, my eldest daughter graduated nineteen ninety-eight. My youngest daughter graduated in two thousand nine. This school has always been known as a really good athletic department, a great sports-- school, and a theater school, and a great art school, among many other things. Sports is a matter of population. And I don't have kids in the school, nor were my daughters into sports, but I know that we're not going to be able to field a lot of teams, and we're going to drop out a lot of sports, and it's going to be a terrible cycle, because then people won't want to come up to this facility. So we're going to lose even more possible people coming through. We could also think about then, how do we open our doors to going beyond Sherman? And how we do that, and how, that's a possibility, or should we do it? If nothing else, the sports department, the athletic director, we really have to have on board with, how do we field teams? How do we keep sports going up here? How do we keep the theater group going? So it's time to brainstorm, and it would be great to let the process of the long-range planning of the goal three, you know, finish off, but I think we're really going to be hitting some really big issues soon that affect the big picture, not just the micro of the elementary schools and the middle, and its integration with the middle and high. So, how do we do that?
If I could just say to you, I would prefer, at least tonight, with regard to whatever this discussion is, that we don't make financial decisions tonight. For example, you suggested perhaps an adjustment to the tuition, et cetera. I would like to do that all at once in conjunction with the budget discussion, so that we have everything in front of us to do financially, instead of doing a piece more here, then we go-
Sure. I mean, we can't change the contract now, but we sure can if, you know, after we look at the business numbers.
Greg?
Yeah, I think there are many ways you can approach this, but it occurs to me that various dire circumstances present opportunities. The declining enrollment is not just affecting Region 12, it's affecting all the other regions, small regions, especially here in Litchfield County. This is going to mean that there'll be changes in other places. Some people will suffer even worse than us. And I think there are opportunities there, but there really is one fundamental way to take advantage of those opportunities. And to be able to be the school that attracts more people from Sherman and other districts in other ways when the opportunities present themselves, and that is to have a first-rate program, and to make the program the focus. And I think that when people are focusing on the strategic plan and its rollout and the options and strategies, they need to focus on the district as a whole, and they need to stop thinking about what might be going on for five or six years at one point in their children's development, and think of what it could mean for a region not to have a proper school district and a proper program, and what it could mean if it had an excellent one. And I think everything we can do to be able to focus this, so that the high school can be a terrific high school with a really vibrant program, is the way you're going to attract people, both to the region who are going to want to move here and live here, and when the school, their schools are looking for a home, when they're looking for a home for their students, as they were recently in Thomason, they're looking for possibly for a region to send their students to, that they would look to Region 12 as the premier region in the area. So I think the superintendent's efforts to make the program rich are the way you're going to bear fruit in this in the long term. In the short term, you can fail, and you can be upset, you can wonder what you're going to do, but it isn't going to get you anywhere. And you can, you can sell the program well, you can go out there, and we could probably do a better job of selling it. You can always do a better job of selling it. But if that's going to bring in an extra 20 or 30 students, that ain't going to solve the problem. It's going to help, but it's not going to solve the ultimate problem. The way you solve the problem is by making people want to come here. You work on the, if you can't affect supply, because you can't make people have more children in the district, you can't make people move to the district, what you can affect is the demand side, by making them want to come to the district. And that's where I think the most fruit will be born. And I think if people focus on the long-term plan and say, look, yeah, we're going to have to really focus on how do we get one beautiful integrated program that really makes this an attractive place, that's what I think we need to have. And anything that pushes us in the direction of recognizing that is important. And I know that there are concerns about the various age groups and the levels and where the students are going to school, but we have to focus on the prime thing, which is how do we have the best school system? How do we have the best high school, the best middle school that people want to come to? That, I think, is the fundamental way to approach this thing, for the long term.
Alan?
I completely agree, but I'd also say that we, this appears to be about short-term. We can't give that short-trip, because clearly there are things you can do in short-term at the same time. You know, like the analogy of somebody who's overweight and unhealthy, sure, you've got to lose all the weight, but you can change your diet immediately. So we are obviously working on a long-term, excellent, attractive school system, but that doesn't mean we, there's nothing we can do now. There might be nothing we can do now, but it seems as if the letter that has spurred this particular agenda item addressed a couple of issues that, I don't know what the word brainstorming, to me, usually means unfettered idea throwing, we qualify them later. Maybe yes, we want to engage it now, have it spill over into the public comment later, because it'll throw things at us that we can report and add to it. Certainly, we've been doing that in a long-range planning way. But in a short-term way, there were a couple of things that were addressed, and maybe we just need some answers. I know that last week, two weeks ago, a citizen from Washington asked about the Sherman potentials for next year, and that was mentioned in this letter. And maybe we want to address that, whether that's rumor, whether that's true, what could have caused that, what we can do to reverse that immediately in the short term. Aspects as far as marketing presenting, those kind of things are the PR kind of things that we can do with the very great school system we have now, as opposed to the excellent one we'll have in the long term. These kind of things were addressed, and maybe we can kind of focus on those, knowing that we already are working on the long term, that that is a great point, that's very important.
We, as of now, we only have one student who was confirmed from Sherman. We still have four others that are deciding. We, I have been to Sherman, I visited each eighth-grade class, Todd Dyer went over with kids, we brought prizes to get them excited, they came here, five families came for a tour. We have offered, and I wanted to confirm with Kim, to give them free passes to next week's How to Succeed in Business, to let them come and see our theater and drama program, which we send them our newsletter every week. Trying to think what else we've done in the past, in recent past. We also now are, we are reaching out to our current eighth graders, hoping to keep them here, as many of them as possible. Go ahead.
Teresa and I met today, and we talked with Todd and Matt about the best way to do that. The next couple of weeks, our counselors and our athletic director, some of the team captains, and some of our students will visit middle school classrooms and talk to the kids about high school. Obviously, most high school conversations are about calling their fears about that transition, but also about the good things about Chappag that drew them to the school. So that's, that's in the works as we speak. As soon as CMT and Capland is over, we'll be there.
Kelly?
I agree, we have short-term strategies we can undertake. Certainly, every private school that needs to be visited, St. Rose, Montessori, all of them, to have our programs to do, but I really agree with Greg for the long term. We've spent almost two years now in a, in a strategic planning process, which I have had severe misgivings about, many of them. But the major one has to do with the fact that we are, have been mostly thinking about moving the furniture around. And we haven't been talking about how to create a competitive, world-class program, because the one thing we can do that will attract students and families here is to create the best program possible. People would even send their students here and ask to pay tuition if we get a program like that from surrounding communities. That's the long-term solution, is to create a program that is up there in the top tier with the top Connecticut school systems. I mean, across the board, not just elementary, not just some elementary, not just middle school, or high school, but the entire program. And if we do that, I think we have a really bright future. But we haven't talked enough about that, of what's happening within our program, our curriculum, what do we want our children to learn, what are the topics that they need to cover, how will they cover it? We pretty much assumed that we would do what we do now in a different facility. I don't know whether it would be independent schools in each of the towns, or a consolidated school, but if it's a consolidated school of 500 students, it's not going to solve our problem. It's going to be a very expensive solution. So if we can work on the content going forward, and hope Dr. Casantino will do that with vigor, because if we can really improve our program to the point where it's, everyone must come here, we don't have a problem.
All right, thank you. Valerie?
Well, Jennifer made some very good recommendations for the short term. And hopefully, you got your letter. I had trouble forwarding it on the new system to everyone, but you also have copies. And I think part of it is, is that we have Montessori and Rumsey, and those schools end, I believe, at ninth grade. I think Rumsey's at ninth grade, and Montessori is at eighth, I might be wrong. They've got to go somewhere, those people. And, you know, here we are, and we really have to be more aggressive about offering Chappag as a natural next step. A lot of them will go to other private schools, Hotchkiss, Gunnery, but some of these kids will definitely, I think, be attracted here, if we really made the effort. I think I would recommend highly probably three expensive things. Usually, I don't go out on a limb in terms of expense. I think we really have to renegotiate the tuition, not only with Sherman, but in general, because it's for the greater good. And I mean that about tuition for everyone, not just Sherman. Because there might be parents who are looking, who are in Bethlehem or Woodbury, they're not, you know, would rather come here instead of Nonowog. There are parents in Region 6 that would rather maybe come here instead of Lumogo. But, you know, if we're charging, what are we charging now? Fifteen thousand? About fifteen thousand, for sure. I mean, who's going to do that? I mean, that's crazy. That's the only way we're going to survive, you know? So I think we have to, like, immediately think about how to renegotiate tuition for everyone. Definitely renegotiate tuition for Sherman. I would like us to have, and this is a detail I do not know, but offer a late bus to Sherman students, so parents do not have to travel 45 minutes each day to pick up after-school activities. And I believe there was a location in Bridgewater near, and maybe Jennifer can answer that better, that makes it a little bit closer to New Milford, so, you know, they don't have to come all the way up here. That is so easy. Will it cost us some bucks? Yes, but it's going to save the school. Talk about save our schools. You know, it's not just about keeping the three elementary schools, this is the big picture. And I do think, I personally, God help me, I would like us to hire a PR firm, so we can actually get some professional assistance, brochures, and how to approach this. I mean, if someone can do this cheaply but well, so that we get our name out better, it's all about the sale. And in the interim, we really do want to have, I think, parents, peer groups, the athletic director, go out, not only, of course, to Sherman, but to these, these other surrounding towns or regions. Obviously, I don't think we're going to get a lot of big reception from Region 14, they've got their own problems, but somehow or another, we've got to get it out there. And we have to do it professionally, we've got to do it fast.
I just want to add two things. I know that there are a lot of staff who work for us, who would love to send their children to our district, in my former districts. Staff paid a minimal fee for supplies of $500 a year, and those students could come, and if they were special education students, they had to pay the difference, but it brought more students into the school, and it would help with, you know, getting, especially in those elementary schools, more children. And the other thing is, I had a meeting, oh, two weeks ago, with all the private, it was really with the Washington Planning and Zoning Commission, and they had all the private schools there, and I represented the public schools. And I just want to let you know, all of the private schools are having a hard time with their day students. Their numbers are falling, Montessori's falling, Gunnery's falling, the international students and the boarding students, not a problem, but the day students, they're not there. So I just want to let you know that they are, they are hurting also.
But the good news is, is that Rumsey and Montessori stop at that one point where we would love to have those kids come up here. We're not taking phone in.
Greg?
I think we have to be very careful when we talk about trying to attract students from other public school districts that are functioning and operating. I don't, I don't think it makes any sense whatsoever to talk about trying to attract students from those regions that have school districts that are functioning. If they want to send their kids here and pay tuition, that's fine, we can talk about the tuition negotiation, but we don't want to get into a thing where all of the districts that are suffering start poaching students from one another. That is not a route to success, that is a race to the bottom. But what I do think we could do right away to solve the problem is, is that maybe we should, you know, right now, I had a parent, a very influential parent, tell me that one of the reasons that Sherman students aren't so thrilled about coming here is that those buses leave awfully early in the morning, and it's a long ride. Well, you know, and they said we should do something about the time the bus leaves, and only then, when I investigated it now and we looked into it, we discovered that Sherman is the one that controls the bus, and they pay for it, and they deal with it, and they control when it leaves. So it really doesn't do any good for us to address that. Maybe we should buy the bus.
We do.
And, no, I don't think we do.
It's part of our contract, we supply the bus.
No, we supply, we may supply money-
They pass to the bus, they control the bus.
Well, maybe we need to rethink that and renegotiate that. Maybe that bus should leave there. Look, I don't know, I'm not suggesting we ought to get town cars to bring it, but we, maybe we should. But what we ought to, what we ought to consider is, is making sure that that bus leaves at a time that's not so early, that they get here to this building 45 minutes or half an hour before school begins, when kids coming from the local town are arriving 10 minutes before it begins, and they have to leave up there early, because the, we are almost not the earliest bus. But if our bus moved back 20 minutes, they'd still get here before school, and that would be a prime attractor, I think, and you may get a few more that way. It's those kind of little things that you could do right next year, that would solve the problem.
Fran?
A quick, again, you know, a quick fix, long range, and stuff like that. The late bus, I have brought up numerous times in different committees for Sherman too, because there's, the late bus at the end of the day stops, makes four stops. It goes to Roxbury, Roxbury Market, and then it goes to Bridgewater, and then it goes to Marble Dale, and then to the center of Washington. That's the, the end-of-the-day late bus run. It would be very simple, without hardly any financial constraints, if it was possible for the late bus to make one more stop, and that would be in the center of New Milford at a public place, like a public library, which would bring the Sherman kids closer to Sherman, and would not add any time to the bus routes for the rest of us. Yes, it's a long thing, and they're on the bus for about an hour doing that, that run, but that's a quick, quick, easy fix, that we just have to have a safe place for the children to be for those bus drop-offs.
Okay, thank you. That's a good idea. Kelly?
Yeah, I think this is an example, this discussion of how the strategy goes on this issue. We talk about the long term, then we talk about the short term, what we can do now. I think we need to be really separated into the two, the long-term strategy and how we can increase enrollment in the school system, and then the short-term strategies for how we can deal with the short term, attracting more students with school fixes, as Fran suggested, as you suggested, going to the school. And, but we have to do both. We can't just leave one or go back and forth. I think we lose our focus in the long term when we delve down to the detail of what happens after New Milford.
All right, I agree. With regard to these short-term strategies, we've heard a number of them, and for those who voiced them, thank you, and I'm sure Dr. Casantino has made note of them. What I would suggest is, is it something that we can try to address in short-term strategies, at least to start at our March 20 meeting? Maybe Dr. Casantino will have some costing out, not necessarily costing out, but have reviewed them with her staff and get ideas as to which ones they think would be most beneficial on the board, if they perhaps take some action at that time.
The March 20th meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's a budget, specific budget.
Yes, the budget meeting, okay.
It's a budget item, but it's, these are, these are having financial impacts.
I will, I will give you a list, I'll do the best I can with Bob. I'll do the best I can.
That's what I just want to point out, is if people are concerned, you know, there obviously might end up being some expense we can look at as an investment in attracting greater population, avoiding poaching, obviously, and something along the lines of buses, that kind of thing. But something I wanted to just re-clarify with Bob, is that when we tuition out, when we tuition in other students, either from other districts like Sherman, or if staff is allowed to start a program where their kids can come, that's in itself somewhat budget-neutral, right? Because we already have facilities, we already have the teachers, we already have the materials, it's just being able to...
As long as, as long as you don't, there's incremental costs, it depends on what it is, what you put has, I'm going to call them soft costs. You may have to get books for these kids, you don't have to get another room for the kids. You don't have to get another room for the kids.
But it does...
Could be some small incremental costs.
The big budget issues we always have are the increasing, the per pupil expense. What this does is it begins to attack the pupil side of that equation by increasing the pupils.
The unfortunate side of it is, is the revenue goes to the town.
And that's what I, that's why I wanted you to mention this, is that it's not as if this pays down the budget, the revenue goes to...
Pays it down...
Any income that a school system receives, any revenue, doesn't offset a budget, it goes directly to the town, that's right.
Whether we have 60 kids or we have 25 kids, the long and the short of it is, the school system has been operating, and they haven't got relief for the dollars that have been coming in, because it goes to the revenue side of the budget, which is, again, it helps the town to pay for the overall school system. If there's additional costs, we're the ones that have to put that into the general fund side of the budget, the expense side. The costs haven't been significant enough to worry about. In other words, you have to bring in another classroom, another portable, anything to address these kids, we've been able to absorb it with what we have.
I'm just bringing this up, so it can be a...
And the revenue generated isn't a direct benefit to the school board, per se, on the offset of expenses, it helps the town.
Right, and that's what I wanted to bring up, in case it gets to the point where we begin to become involved in these things that have incremental expenses. We don't want parents saying, hey, our budget is going up for this, and these kids are getting to come here for less than our per pupil. The idea is that, yes, but that incremental expense is offset by money going back to your town. And if we're a little clear on that, we realize this is not in any way a sacrifice, it's something that can benefit all of us, and especially the kids in whose classrooms are going to have a higher population.
Valerie?
Can we get on the budget, sorry, on the agenda? I don't know if you want to take this as far out as the budget, maybe not. You know, the passing of the budget. Why don't we get on the agenda, business meeting, maybe next business meeting or the one after that, the Sherman tuition, the Sherman bus, and the tuition that we charge in person, so that the board can consider what our options are, what it looks like, and what we might accomplish. That's short-term, short-term.
I don't have an objection.
That's just for expensive buses, though.
We're not going to do it at the budget meeting, so...
It's a big issue, though, I mean, if we're just going over the budget, that's not the numbers for that night, and maybe some incremental bus costs. But I'm talking about, really, our whole policy on all tuition. And perhaps staff tuition or fees.
All right, we'll do that then. Is there anything else on this side? Greg? Well, I'm thinking back to our, the meeting we had with our council discussing in our retreat, where we discussed the value-added things that the board does, and I'm wondering what, I mean, I think when you have a little thing where you throw around ideas, and where you talk about the policy of addressing long-term versus short-term, that part of the discussion, I think this is a valuable board, a value-added function the board informs, but I don't know that this is an issue that we should be dealing with as a board, is to figure it out, how it should be done. It's one thing for us to throw around a few ideas, but I think it's another for us to get involved in the nitty-gritty, and I really think this is something the superintendent should do. The superintendent should come up with a plan to, as best as possible, address this issue, but I think that there are so many things on the plate right now, to throw another thing on the fire at this point is probably not the best thing we should do. If it takes, if it distracts the superintendent from the many important things we need to do. No, we, it's not good that we're losing people, no, it's not good that we haven't had as many Sherman people sign up, if that's the case. But if we drop everything we're doing to address this, or take valuable time to address this, I'm not sure it's the best thing we could be spending our time on. And I don't think this is something the board should be involved in. I really think this is something the superintendent should deal with in whatever appropriate way she feels is necessary through her budget process, if it means renegotiating. If she comes back and says, I've decided we need to renegotiate the contracts, that's something the board has to get into. But other than things like that, I think we're getting into the weeds when we go in this direction. And I think it's a mistake, because there's got to be a focus, and the focus has got to be on the long-term, and yes, you've got to reach out to some short-term things that can help you get there, but if you start focusing in too many different directions, you lose sight of the long-term, and then you defeat yourself in the process. I don't think, that's why I don't think we should be in this, in this thing, I don't think we have any value. Well, it is an item of interest to board members. I don't have an objection to putting it on an agenda for a business meeting and have the superintendent make a presentation to us, because we've done this before. I mean, having a presentation made to us as to where we are now, what the numbers are now, what we've been dealing with recently, and the board can discuss it, so I don't have a problem putting it on a future business and agenda. I think it's something that we do need to deal with. If the superintendent wants to make a presentation at that time as to suggestions or et cetera, that's fine, but I think it will go on an agenda. Thank you for your comments. Is there anything else?
I have a question, talking about agendas and meetings. We talked about having, you know, right now we have a budget business meeting, and we have an education meeting. We're a board of education, every meeting's an education meeting, and I think every meeting should be a business meeting. Things, we're always putting things off that we can probably do it the next time, and we're a board of education, so if it has to do with educating our children, we should be able to do this business thing, it shouldn't have to be put off for a whole month. And we talked about that at our retreat and other, it's been brought up before, and I think it's very valuable, and this is just another point to bring us back around, where we could get things done, and we don't have to keep pushing it so far out, and that all of our meetings, our education meetings, and all of our meetings should be business meetings. And we shouldn't have two separate agendas.
Well...
So I don't think that we should wait for the next business meeting, it should fall on the next education meeting, which is March 25th.
Okay. I'll have, let me, I will discuss it with the superintendent and decide which agenda it gets on. The fact is that we do have two separate agendas. We have an education committee meeting, once a month, which is a committee of the whole board, to address primary educational issues. We do have what we call a business meeting, once a month. I haven't heard anybody move to change that necessarily. It is true that the agendas, various items are discussed on different agendas as needs arise, there's no question about that. And I hear what you're saying, Fran, but I will discuss with the superintendent as to, the earliest that we can get this up for consideration with the board, whether it'll be the next education committee meeting or a business agenda. Is there anything else? All right. And moving on to item eight, opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who might like to address this? Please just state your name and where you're from.
Okay, well, my name is Carrie O'Toole, I'm from Washington.
Ma'am, do we need to, yeah, if you would come over here to stand, if you don't mind, members of the public, then take, your faces can be seen.
No hiding, Carrie, okay.
I just wanted to thank...
I'm sorry, just state your name and where you're from, please.
Okay, once again, my name is Carrie O'Toole, and I'm from Washington. I want to thank everyone for their thoughtful conversation about what we need to do to this school to attract people in light of the declining enrollment. One thing I'd like you to consider is, it's not a job just for the superintendent or for the board, but you really want parents there to be able to sell the school, because there's nothing a parent wants to hear more than from another parent about how that school is working for their child. So as we move forward, I'd like to see the board, superintendent, and parents work together as partners to achieve that. I also want to comment on Chairman Hirschfield's comments earlier in the meeting, and the fact that the board gives full support to the rapid changes that the district is currently undergoing. I can appreciate that. And he also commented about the board's concern about improving student achievement, which I too am concerned about. There is a schedule change that's been put in place, and so I'm just going to use that as one example, this would be other examples. But I'm wondering what the measures would be for how student achievement is improved, and also what the timeframe for that measurement would be. I know that high-achieving students will be successful, given any change, but when we look at kids that struggle, a change like this could be disruptive. One thing I know is that with the new schedule, there won't be any time for a study hall to be offered, and so our struggling students are going to move from three class periods to seven class periods a day, which, I know that we did that in the past, when I was a student here, we had seven classes a day, but I had a study hall. In the interim, I believe graduation requirements have increased, and so there's no time for that. That's going to make it hard on some kids. So what I'd like to propose, I'd like to ask the board to look at the number of failures per marking period, and look at the number of students who failed courses over the year in the future, as compared to maybe in the past five years. I think that would be a fair measurement. I think it is an issue of concern, because what we want to see is that we're not seeing school failure, so decreasing graduation rates, and how these failures might impact college acceptance. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
My name is Gemma Pody, and I was the one who wrote the letter in regards to increasing our enrollment. And I'm actually just going to piggyback a little bit on what we were just, what I just heard, actually, and I'm a little confused, because for me, I don't think long-term and short-term need to be either or, I think you can work on both, effectively, actually. I don't think we need to dismiss and discard what we could do short-term to increase enrollment, because actually, for me, having students or children rather than are going to be in the Shapag, one that's a middle school, and one that's a primary, for me, by even just kind of holding back a little bit, and yet I know you, you had said the number of 20 to 30 students isn't going to make a break us, but when I think of 20 or 30 students, that's a classroom or two at primary. And so for me, those numbers, 20 students to me is a pretty large number. So for me, even five students is a large number. So for me, what we used to have for Sherman, and what we have now, is a big difference. So I'm not okay with one student confirmed when we could have five. And so when I look at long-term, which I'm a long-range planning committee, so I'm eating and breathing long-term, for me, short-term makes me feel like I can digest long-term a little better. It makes me feel like there's a little light in the tunnel as we're looking towards the bigger goal. So when I think about basketball in our region, and it almost is, it's becoming non-existent in high school, that's a deal-breaker for a Sherman student, maybe. We don't have a strong basketball student for girls, a basketball team, rather, at Shapag. That could be two girls who decide to go to New Milford because we don't have that to offer. That's a big deal. And so for me, having our athletic director be part of a larger group of a committee that would recruit students from Sherman and from Montessori, for me, is huge, and that can work simultaneously with our long-term. So for me, there's neither, there's not a one or the other, they both should work together. We should not just push short-term off because we're looking at the bigger picture, they have to be worked together. So when I look and I see and I worry about the future, and my daughter's in sixth grade, but ninth grade's right around the corner, if there's not a viable sports team that makes the whole package attractive, then we're going to be losing even more students than our projection team are showing. All of those people who are in our projections, that are part of the fiber of our community, they might be deal-breakers for them, and that's an even bigger concern for me. So we need to look at the whole picture, and we do need to create a committee. And I know we're trying hard as a, as a community to attract Sherman, but I don't know if we're working hard enough. For me, if I'm only hearing one, one confirmed, is that enough? Are we doing enough right now to attract more students? I look at the numbers, when I called Montessori for what they have as Region 12 students, to me, again, those numbers may seem small in the bigger picture, but again, when I look at a classroom at Washington, Montessori, or at Burnham, or at Booth, those numbers all of a sudden are really big to me. So when I see 40 families, 40 families, just Washington alone, or, I'm sorry, 40 students in total that are Montessori, that's a big number, that's two classrooms of 20 students. 12 of them are middle school, 12 of them are in middle school right now, which tells me that in the next three years, they could potentially be ours, if we make ourselves attractive. So we need to offer the whole picture and be able to sustain that whole picture while we're looking down the road at the long-range, bigger district. Otherwise, it's all going to crawl, crash underneath our fingertips. So as much as I'm working towards the long-range plan, I feel if we don't take care of the short-term, then we're not really being as responsible as we should be, and that, to me, is the biggest shame. So for me, when I, when I, when I itemized a few ideas that we could do now, that really isn't going to take any skin off our backs, creating a committee that would include our athletic director, and I don't know if he's even a part of that committee now, but to me, that's recruitment, that's somebody coming into Sherman to say, hey, these are the programs that we have to offer. And then the peer-led tours, I don't know if we do that, but for me, if we had a student Sherman who was strength and interest with science, and we picked our strongest science student at high school to tour him around, to me, that is huge. If we had somebody who was interested in basketball at Sherman, and we had our basketball, one of our star basketball players touring them around, again, that's huge. And for me, and I kind of think about what Carrie said, and it was what I said in the letter too, when we create a panel for recruiting and for talking with Sherman parents, it should be the principal, it should be parents, it should be athletic director, it should be the superintendent, because parents hold the values. So when I'm choosing a school for my child, it matters to me what a parent is going to say. So when I ask a parent of Shapag, tell me what your, the biggest asset is, the strongest asset for your child in Shapag, and you tell me, I'm going to remember that. And so for me, we really need to always improve, even while we're looking long-term down here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I know it's going to be on camera, so my work out close. Carolyn Dwyer from Bridgewater, and I love this discussion, this is what we've been talking a lot about, some of you are aware, in our Option Three Committee, Part of Long-Range Planning Committee, and we've really gotten, I'm just going to use the word mired, but that has a negative connotation, in brainstorm. And the brainstorm is, how do we bring kids in here? And I love that Valerie brought it to the forefront tonight, and I know that Mike, and Julie, and Jen, and myself, and we've all been talking about it, and really brainstorming about how to bring more kids here. And when you do talk about tuition in the next couple of weeks, don't just focus on Sherman, I mean, we've already run the numbers on St. Joe's and Brookfield, let's make our elementary number comparable, so that we can get, what we've talked about too, about getting Brookfield and New Milford kids who are already paying to send their kids to St. Joe's, get them to come to Burnham or Booth, or, you know, if they even want to make the trip up to Washington. And Washington, we've talked about that too, they've got opportunities up there locally. And so, you know, let's just make sure when we have this tuition discussion, that it goes in-depth, and that we can really tackle it from a lot of different angles. And I don't know, I know what you were saying, Greg, about not wanting to get mired in things, but I almost wish some of our discussions were going live, you know, and I don't know how, and maybe that'll happen in some of our presentations when you all hear it, but, or, you know, at some point, long-range, do we then drill down and have these smaller committees that say, you know what, parents, we're going to task you with helping us with the Sherman issue, helping us with the tuition issue, whatever it is, helping us with brochures, because you have a lot of... Because you have a lot of really talented people out here that just want to make it better too, just like you are. We're all volunteering our time, and, so just take advantage of us, I guess. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about is, when you do meet to talk about the budget and drill down, security stood out for me. I know a lot of the other towns around us have already put a big chunk of their increase this year into security. I know from the quick read I did here, it says yours is sort of forthcoming. I know that the Homeland Security people have come through, and I know for Burnham, they're going to be giving us recommendations in another week or so. I just want to make sure we have money set aside. So if we're going to be pulling it from 1% to do something else, I think we're going to need a chunk in the next year, because we can't wait. So, you know, the post-Columbine locks, they're going to need to go in. Doors are going to need to be fixed. I mean, there are some basics that are going to need to be done. So I just hope when you're having that discussion, that you keep a chunk of money aside for that critical stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I know you're all probably ready to go home. My name is Molly Leonard Cook. I have two little girls in Washington primary, in third and in first grade, and I just wanted to talk for a minute about the devices. I know it probably doesn't seem like a big deal. I don't know how many of you, I know you do, I don't know how many of you have children in the primary school, but for me, I have a six-year-old and an eight-year-old, and it does feel like a bigger deal. And I do know that parents are not aware that they are allowed to use them at recess. And indoor recess this winter, the children started to use them a lot, and then they sort of slid away, and then came back and slid away. And I will say, the school has talked to me, Emily's called me, she had a meeting with me, and was great. The superintendent emailed me back immediately about my letter that I sent to all of you, which was great. But I'm not happy with the response, obviously, I wouldn't be here. I feel like they're really young, and it should just be a rule. I think if I...
Excuse me, what should be a rule?
To not allow them at recess. I think, I wish a little more forethought was put into the actual bringing them to school. I think it's sort of just separate issues. I have my own issues with that, I'm not against it. I wish it had more rules and regulations. I know there's children that can't afford them at home nevertheless to bring them at school, and I feel like it's really sort of dividing them a little bit. I know mine was in tears one day, it was raining, she wanted to bring our iPad, which I had to save for, and I bought on like Black Friday, because we can't just afford to buy all of our kids iPads by any means, and I wasn't going to let her bring it on the bus to school. So it has caused some diverged, you know, dividing of the children a little bit, you know, and I don't want that sort of cool kids brought their iPads, and not cool kids have to play with Legos. That's one problem that I have with it. Another problem is, my child came home one day, and they had been playing a matchmaking game, she's eight. One of the little girls has an iPad, put all the kids' names in the classroom, who married who, so-and-so had so many kids. It was a little creepy, I mean, they're eight, and she would never be allowed to play that at home. She was viewing over the shoulder. That was when it came up, and now the solution was to make a list of all the kids that are not allowed to view, and the teachers have a list, and if they start to view, they get sort of shushed away. It feels so inappropriate for the age group. I don't think it's an age group that you can just sort of hope they're going to get the idea eventually, that they'd rather do something else. I think it should just be a rule. I think they're very young. It's not educational playing games at Norby Says, I see no value. I think if it became a rule, you're not going to have 10 parents coming in going, "I can't believe you took my kid's iPad away at recess." So I feel like if you have parents opposing it, you're not, and you're not going to have them on the other side, I think, I think you have a problem. And I, I feel like you have so many problems with the high school, and I understand all that, we're new in town, but I'm getting an idea, so I feel like this is small on your big plate of crazy. But I do feel like it's important, and I feel really strongly about it. And again, Emily did hear me, and the superintendent heard me, and they talked to me, but I disagree with it. I think it needs to be made a rule. I wish somebody would sort of look at it. Again, again, I see no benefit to it at all. I think it's divisive, it's noneducational. Every moment should be a teaching moment, is sort of our theory at Washington, which I love, and I love that at indoor recess, they've opened the gyms and the art, and all of that is so positive, that to even have one sad little kid that probably needs a hug, or five, or whatever it is, sitting there playing on their iPad is such a waste of time. And my last problem with it is, a lot of the parents are not aware of it, I know that for sure. And I don't want to like go email them all and rile them up, that's not my intention. But my other problem would be, is that there are only, children should really only have so much screen time a day, pediatricians say it, doctors say it, psychologists say it. And so you add that 30 minutes at recess, and now 15 on the bus going, 15 on the bus coming home, you have an hour, and your parents don't even know. So now if they're saying, if you get your homework done, you can have an hour of this or an hour of TV, now we have two hours, three hours. I mean, it adds up like that, and they're really little, and I think we should set better standards for our children than that, in this nice, small community where everybody is watching so closely.
Thank you.
But thank you for listening so much.
Yeah.
I'm agree. My name is Preston, I'm also from Washington primary, so I have two children there. Thank you for your time. And I'm also agree with basically everything Molly said, and many of you have actually raised concerns that I have as well regarding devices and our children being allowed to play games during indoor/outdoor recess. And I've heard many parents also tell me that they've gone in, picked up their student, and seen a child playing on a device at school. So it sounds like it's a work in progress, and hopefully the rules maybe have tightened up a little bit more, but it seemed like in the beginning, I saw a second grader in the cafeteria with, listening to an iPod, and that shocked me. And then I hear other parents saying that their students are coming home, saying they saw a student in the bathroom with a device, playing a game. So I, I truly feel there needs to be very strict rules regarding these devices, and you guys did say that that is in place, so hopefully things will be improving, and everyone will know the rules. I cannot memorize everything like Molly, so I'm going to go ahead, and I did submit a letter also to Dr. Casantino, and I'd like to just read that, and this will be brief. "I strongly disagree with allowing our Washington primary school and Region 12 students the opportunity to utilize devices in any form other than for educational purposes. I do not feel there's any benefit in allowing our children to engage in entertainment use of devices during a school day. I feel strongly regarding this, both as a parent and professionally. I work with special educational middle school males, and all they do after they leave is they go home and they play video games on their devices for the rest of the day, because sadly, they don't have parents that are encouraging them to go outside and play sports." And then to think of those children, sadly, we, I'm sure we have many at Region 12 that do go home and do the same thing. "I have a very difficult time understanding how this is seen as acceptable in any educator's eyes. Our children are exposed to enough of this outside of school. As we all know, physical activity can only promote better learning and health, especially when we are in age where our children are too quickly diagnosed and medicated because of ADHD, etc. This feels even more important to me in light of the Newtown tragedy. As a community, if we want to try and help those who need it the most, I do not feel allowing a student time to engage in a fantasy world of video games can in any way be productive during the school day. In essence, I feel strongly that this is encouraging, the very tendency that I believe played a significant role in that tragedy. Those that already feel isolated and alone and escape their reality through video games are now given more opportunity to do so in school." I truly hope that, that you guys hear us and our concerns. I feel very passionately about it for many reasons. My third-grade daughter came home and told me that she was watching two of her peers play on their devices during indoor recess, and that's what kind of started, and I found that appalling, and they were playing a love matching game. I want my daughter to be running around and playing tag, playing Scrabble, Uno. I, I don't want her on this. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you all very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Is anyone else? Most of the board?
Yeah, come on.
Come on. Just tell us your name and what time it is.
Zach Marsh from Bridgewater, Connecticut. Well, like, other times, we're hearing about the video games thing. Well, basically, it's most important, you know, it's mostly of the parents' decision, not necessarily of the school's decision of, like, bad enough for being in a, like, recess period of time, it's basically a kid's free time. They can choose whatever they want to do. And for me, honestly, I've always was been an antisocialist. I never wanted to be with, from, and wasn't just because of me being, anyway, I just didn't, I was always the one who was doing stuff by myself because I have active syndrome. One thing I, not, well, the video game stuff that happened during the, during school is another reason why I'm up here. The reason why I'm up here is, we, as the word that, and the, and this Casantino, what do you be doing for people who have mental disabilities like active syndrome, ADHD, ADP, Down syndrome? What kind of help are you doing in school, in a school program to help them, you know, without being shuffled over, being, being shuffled on?
Zach, first of all, thank you for standing up and speaking, how wonderful. Not everyone could do that, so that's wonderful, absolutely. And I, I, I hear your concerns about the, the technology. Part of me agrees with you, that, you know, especially when kids are older and they can make choices about video games or games, if they have their parents' approval. Well, then, if it is recess, and it is your free time, and all your schoolwork is done, and if you're waiting for a bus and you're playing with a video game, we can talk about that. And, you know, I, what I've tried to say is, it's a school decision. Principals and parents and the PTOs need to decide what's best for each school. As far as the special education services, I don't want to get into that here, because it's just a lot of privacy issues, but I would love to sit down with you and Mrs. O'Hara, and we can see, you know, we have a lot of technology that we can use with kids with special needs to help them access information. We have some cutting-edge material to help, whether it's audiobooks, or Ted.com, interviews where you can get the same curriculum in a different way. So I think what you and your friends here are doing as far as videotaping is a great way to make learning relevant, and to see here, and to not only do that, and listen and learn, I think it's fabulous. So can we agree to make a meeting with Mrs. O'Hara at the end of the week and sit down? Maybe we can have lunch and chat, and go through some of your questions?
Well, it's not just my questions too. My mom is also, I have a big concern about this.
Okay, we can invite your mom if she wants to come also, or any friends. Maybe there's a couple of friends in some of your classes. You know, the communication's important, so if you send me ideas, I'm willing to try it. Okay?
The friend agrees.
Oh, the friend agrees, okay, good.
And one last thing before I say, before I do the, antisocialism is not, is not really so much a scary thing. Like, we're talking about, like, you know, going outside and go play sports or something like that. Even though I love watching sports on TV, and I do like them, my school is more in pride, more in pride than go playing outside and go doing some, like, sports and that. For me, I honestly have my time for doing it during summer. I'm also out playing roller hockey during the summer with people who are twice my age.
That's wonderful.
But I'm not going to go outside, even though I don't have recess for the high school area anymore, as when I was in elementary school. I don't have that anymore, even though, I don't really care to have it back, or whatever, but...
I don't think, you know, I just want, what we, one of the topics we need to talk about is antisocialism and being alone and enjoying time by yourself, because, you know, sometimes people need that. Sometimes people want to be with others, and sometimes they want to be alone, and they may want to read a book, or they may want to play a game, or they want to watch TV, or they may want to go to sleep. Okay? So that's okay, you know? But I think what the parents are saying is, they want to make sure that when their kids are at school, that they're interacting with each other, and they're socializing, and little kids need to do that. So that's really their point.
I was like that before when I was in the middle school, but I didn't really socialize when I was in...
You know what? We're going to be friends, and I'm going to make you socialize. Yeah, that's it, that's it. Now, Zach, I know who you are, and I'm going to come, and we're going to be friends. Okay?
But there's a lot of kids who are like me.
Okay, absolutely. Great job.
Thank you, Zach. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this? All right, thank you all very much, your comments, appreciate them very much. The next item on our agenda is executive session for discussion of personnel items, or motion to go into executives.
Second.
Move the second, and all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, or any abstaining?
Absolutely.
We're in executive session.